Beyond that, I can't say much because of this incredible conflict of interest that I have. Since I'm running for office and begging for your vote is really, is really unseemly for me. You know what bothers me when there's a couple of hundred blanks that I get voted and you don't get all of them, but... As long as you get more than the blanks, Doree tells me, you're in good shape. It is our plan, I believe, to run town meeting tonight and run town meeting tomorrow night. It would be highly desirable from a scheduling point of view if we could finish up tomorrow night. If we cannot, then we have a scheduling problem that we'll have to deal with because we will not meet Friday and we very likely will not meet Monday. Tuesday is the election. We wouldn't want to meet then. And since the polls are open till 8 o'clock and then for some reason the votes have to be counted and the town clerk is involved in that process and others. Wednesday night would be the next probably best night. But perhaps we can finish if I stop talking. And I'll do that. No applause. Come on, let's not start. Let's not start so early. So we will call the meeting to order. We will progress. The first article that is up for discussion is Article 18. But before we deal with 18, the Board of Selectmen has a presentation, an overview presentation covering, is it Articles 18 and 19? Good, fine. I will turn it over to Ms. Tavernier.
Good evening. Doree Hunter and I are standing before you tonight, not for the first time, but hopefully for the last time, to ask you to help us get started putting the first pipe in the ground for public sewer-ing of Acton. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge the hard work of the many volunteers and staff who have helped bring this issue forward tonight. The Sewer Action Committee began its work in July 1995 and for the past 20 months volunteers and staff have accumulated a minimum of 4,600 hours of work on this issue. These are the members, I've put the overhead up for you, who have put in the most time. But in addition to these people, there are others who have served on various task forces, some of them more busy than others at various times of the 20 months. And other staff has been involved as well. But this represents the work of at least 4,600 hours, primarily volunteer hours, and they've performed a great service of the town. I want to recognize those members who are here tonight, maybe if they just hold their hand up as I call their names. Doree Hunter, co-chairman and a fellow member of the Board of Selectmen. Sidney Johnston from the Finance Committee who chaired the Financial Task Force. Bill McGinnis and Mark Conaby who served as members of the Board of Health. Pat Holm from the Planning Board who was the Technical Review Task Force Chair. Art Gagne, Citizen at Large, who was the chairman of the Communication Task Force. And I don't mean to be putting this in the past tense because this job won't be over tonight either. Bob Johnson, who was the chair of the Site Acquisition and Identification Task Force. And staff support, our Acton Health Director Doug Haley, who's up front with me. And the Acton Water District Manager Jim Demming. All of those have contributed greatly to bringing us here tonight. Thank you. The format for this presentation is, as the moderator mentioned, a brief overview of the next three articles on sewers, Articles 18, 19, and 20. We're not planning to do a comprehensive presentation because frankly, probably everyone knows right now how they're going to vote. But beside that point, we do owe you some explanation. But as I'm sure you've all noticed, we have had over the 20 months a great deal of coverage in the newspapers. We've sent out notices in municipal quarterly. We've had six public information sessions and just in the last two months, we visited 14 civic groups where over 300 people heard our presentations. So we feel we've disseminated our information widely. We suspect there are a lot of very specific questions. But we're not going to try to cover everything in our presentation because we know well that those questions will come from the floor. And what we're going to do at the end of this overview though is a little bit unusual. We're going to move to take Article 19 up first before Article 18. Article 19 is the percentage split between the users of the sewer district, the property owners in the district, and the taxpayers. We feel that this information has to be determined by the voters first to help them better, be better informed for the vote on Article 18 in which we will appropriate the $11.5 million. Okay, five decades of problems. That's what we're trying to solve here tonight. Documentation of Acton's wastewater problems began five decades ago and in every decade since, major sewer events have happened. But the main event, a pipe in the ground, has never occurred. We hope to change all that tonight and we hope we will once again have your support. As you can see, we came the closest to success in 1986 and 1988 when town meeting voted overwhelmingly each time to sewer first South Acton and then Kelly's Corner. However, due to a series of regulatory and economic problems, the projects you voted then never came to fruition. What brings us back to town meeting is primarily Title V and frankly, as our presentation, we considered simply putting up the word Title V here and then sitting down. But we realized maybe not all of you have experienced what Title V is, so we're going to help you through that too. In the March of 1995, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection issued new regulations that affected all onsite septic systems. In Acton, this has caused enormous problems, both financial and environmental. And in the past year alone, there have been 150 replacements of failed systems. Systems that would not have met the standards of Title V. And the average cost to replace these systems today is $15,000, climbing on a weekly basis. Many quotes we're now hearing are $30,000, even some as high as $45,000. When we consider the sewer-ing of Acton, we're not exactly breaking ground on a new idea. In the state of Massachusetts, 75% of the homes are on sewers. And in fact, in this entire country, 75% of the people live in a sewered area. Acton is the largest community in the state without public sewers. We have selected five key concerns as the most compelling reasons for everyone to support sewers. Some of this is information that came out in the municipal quarterly. We have handouts that I hope you've picked up. But these are the most compelling reasons from our point of view. The first is environmental protection. Our septic systems are putting water back into the groundwater which recharges our wells for drinking water. All of Acton's drinking water comes from wells which only draw from the top 25 feet of the ground's surface. So that when you look at this diagram of a septic system and it shows you the leach area which as you know disperses the water into the ground, traveling back down to the groundwater. I think you can see why we feel the protection of our drinking water is paramount in this discussion. The second compelling reason is that we have a need to solve a problem at the schools. The Acton-Boxborough Regional School System has been ordered by the Department of Environmental Protection to build a treatment plant for their high school and junior high school. This is part of not only the new Title V, but leftover regulations that have been in effect for the last 10 to 20 years which say that any groundwater now under Title V, that any system that discharges more than 10,000 gallons per day needs to be treated and it needs to be treated in this case with a sewer plant because the schools discharge 30,000 gallons per day currently. So they need to solve their existing problem now and this is without any regard for school expansion. And joining into this first sewer district will be the most cost-effective solution for all of us since all of us will be expected to pay for the school's solution. Revitalization is the next reason. Has anyone looked at Exchange Hall and South Acton Center recently? The building is in a serious state of decline and that can only be helped with the help of sewers. South Acton Village has 50 years of documented problems and will never reach its full potential without sewers. Our next reason is economic development. Last year, town meeting voters adopted 10 zoning articles to encourage the rebirth of Kelly's Corner, a vital commercial area. The vision of the Kelly's Corner Plan will never come into focus without the help of sewers. A stronger commercial base will help offset the residential tax burden and will provide more diverse services to the residents. And I have it on good authority and the owner of the property confirmed this, that we lost the opportunity to have a Boston Market move into Acton into this location where Plywood Ranch was because there simply wasn't the septic solution there. The last reason is hope. This is the first sewer district for the town. We will continue our work to sewer the rest of the areas of town that need sewers. If we don't get a pipe in the ground now, there will be no hope for sewer-ing any other area in this town. This is more, what more and more of our businesses and neighborhoods will look like if you think onsite solutions are the solution. This is the before. And this is the after. We're seeing more and more of these. This is the system on Main Street. And I like to tell the story about this. If you can see what's behind the white picket fence, it's a retaining wall for the septic system. And the building commissioner, when this was being constructed, came along and slapped a stop work order on the house and said, "Hey, you can't build a house next to that. You don't have a building permit." Well, it turned out it was the septic system. That house is on Main Street. The next one is Elm Street Condominiums. Another cement retaining wall without the attractive white picket fence. Picture these kinds of systems in South Acton Center because these are the only solutions for that area in many cases. And the last one is probably the most expensive septic system in this town. That used to be Frosty Corners. It was purchased by Idlewild Farms for $300,000. We all fought in the neighborhood. Oh, great, he's going to put in that nice little gourmet breakfast place that we need so badly. And they tore down the building. I thought, here it comes. And then the steam shovel, I'm showing my age, the power shovel moved in, excavated the entire area and built a mountain, put asphalt on top of it for parking. Is it a raised parking garage? No, it's a septic system. A $330,000 septic system that could have added commercial revenue to the tax base. This is the proposed first district sewer. We call it Middle Fort Ponbrook Sewer District. It's the northernmost part, is the regional school system up here. It moves down through Kelly's Corner, taking both commercial and residential areas in Kelly's Corner. Then moves to South Acton Center via Main Street and Main Street goes over South Acton Center up to Fletcher Court. It takes part of Martin and Maple, moves up River, down Parker, to High Street, to Adams Street where we own a 40-acre site purchased for the purpose of a sewer plant. The Adams Street site currently can accommodate the existing flow from all of these properties in the district. As greater capacity is allowed by DEP, DEP and EPA, this district will expand to other areas. This is actually a map that was the sewer district as of two months ago. So anyone who is in this expanded area should have greater hope that you will be added as soon as we're given more capacity at Adams Street. That's currently under review by DEP. But at a meeting today with DEP, we were essentially given the green light to go ahead with this first district built on these assumptions with the full anticipation of expanded capacity to the system. And we do expect to expand beyond this initial capacity of 250,000 gallons per day. And when we do, the full build-out flow can be discharged at this site, hopefully into the Assabette River. This is the only surface water that Acton has access to. And as soon as we're able to solve the problem, we're removing phosphorus, which we think is right on the horizon for a solution and it's being done in Maynard. We think EPA, it's the federal government that has control of the river, will allow us into the river. So the properties in the district, the first of the two maps that I showed you, will be assessed their share of the capital cost based on the full potential of their property. And in the unlikely event that full capacity is not attained, then we will give consideration to another system of assessing the betterments. This map shows you the 11 sewer districts in the town to show you that we are looking to sewer the parts of town that need it. You must understand that it's not as simple as saying, "Oh, my area needs to be sewed. Let's go." The State Department of Environmental Protection requires fairly extensive study of each area before they will approve the expansion. So we have broken the town into districts primarily by watershed. And each one has a name and we document current conditions in those districts. We have the failure rates and so forth. So because that's the kind of documentation DEP is going to be looking for. It's difficult to give a timeframe for this additional sewer-ing because so much depends on the capacity granted to us at Adams Street. And as I say, we fully expect to get into the Assabette River and if we do, the entire town can be sewed from that site. This is a sewer system. It's something we don't know much about here unless you lived on one and moved here. The estimated cost to sewer the whole town would be $90 million. And the realistic timetable to do that is no fewer than 10 years and probably closer to 20. Because each sewer district from the point of study to construction, if everything goes smoothly, would take a maximum of five years. And that assumes that we have a discharge location for that. There are about 125 miles of roadway in Acton and approximately 100 of those would be in areas that would be sewed because of course there's 20% of the town that is either currently on private sewers or that would never realistically have to be sewed. Practically speaking though, in terms of mileage of road, that's what the limitation is on how fast you can move because you can only physically put pipes in the ground to the level of 10 miles each year. And even that's an ambitious schedule. In Article 20, we will be asking for an appropriation to seek other disposal sites in and out of town. We could easily build a plant almost anywhere. That's not the problem. The challenge, especially with Acton soils, is finding a discharge location for the effluent. I'll now ask Doree to continue on with his piece of the overview.
As Nancy said, or implied at least, disposal of effluent, the liquid that comes out of a sewer treatment plant is the problem. We have places for the pipe. We have places to put a plant. But you have to get rid of the liquid no matter how you treat it. The Adams Street site, as I think most of you know, was purchased in 1966 for a sewer plant and is available. That was the first step towards sewer-ing Acton. We've waited 31 years of effort and have not yet taken the second step. I hope we will as a result of what happens here tonight. It's suggested that we did not go forward in 1966 because of undue fear of growth. That the feeling was that by not having sewer-ing, we would limit growth. Well, we got the growth anyway. And if it ever was an effective way of limiting growth, the advent of the modern package treatment plant has obviated that. We have a discharge option at Adams Street now without going into the Assabette River. You will remember that in the 1980s, we were talking about going into the Assabette. And one of the reasons that although the votes were affirmative, we did not end up being able to do that was that the regulations changed because of the fear of the condition of the river water. But since the 80s, there has been a sea change in DEP's attitude. In the 80s, you were not allowed, the system of the size that we're talking about, or even the much smaller systems that exist in some of the private systems in town, you weren't allowed to infiltrate into the ground. Similar to the leaching field in your septic system, although very different in some ways too. Now we can infiltrate. The initial plan is to use Adams Street, which we have owned and indeed purchased for sewer purposes, to infiltrate it, to put it in the ground there. We were particularly excited about using that site. First off, I mean, the easiest answer is we already own it and it's there. The second reason is, as Nancy has indicated, there is very good reason to believe that with extremely high level of treatment that is now available, that actually puts out water much cleaner than it's at the moment in the river, that we will be able to use the river for discharge later. We've done hydrogeologic work at Adams Street and unlike the projects in the 80s, we're having an ongoing review with DEP so that we're talking to them as we come down to the wire. Witness Nancy's mention of the meeting today. In the 80s, we did all the work based on what our consultant had told us and you know, a few intermittent contacts with DEP and then took the whole project up there. And a year later, they came back and said, "No, you can't build it the way you want to build it." We know because of the work in the 80s that we can design a sewer district between the Central Street School Campus and Adams Street. What we're talking about is an embellishment of the 1986 and 1988 plans with some design work already done. There are however significant differences. Principally, the district is bigger. The philosophical concept this time was that we needed to reach the schools and serve them because of the DEP's attitude toward this school system. At the same time, we listened to what was said in the 80s and we wanted to make sure that everyone that had some impact the result of the construction of this sewer system would have a benefit from it. Which meant we had to serve not only the people near Adams Street, but all the people along the corridor and route to the schools. And that is the way the district has been designed. If you look carefully at those two maps that Nancy had up, the skinny one that kind of looks like a political gerrymander is the existing proposed district and it follows topography and the roads. When and if we get the additional capacity we expect for this district from the DEP, that district will get fat. It will grow. And then we'll hopefully move on to the next district. But all the properties that are impacted along the route will have access to the system. Now we're talking about designing and construction a modern sewer plant and it's the plant that a lot of people do the focus on although most of the construction and certainly most of the inconvenience and most of the cost goes into the piping to get the effluent, to get the sewage to the plant. We're talking about a modern plant with appropriate buffing and odor control, which I'll talk about later. Solids are disposed of off-site, about one truckload a week. We will have under Article 18, a discussion of the cost of the proposed system. As you know from the handouts and other material you've seen, the total cost is at $11.5 million. And we expect to get a no-interest 20-year loan effectively from the State Water Pollution Abatement Trust. That amounts to about a 50% subsidy over time. You know, if you take 20 years and you borrow money and it's at 5% interest, you're actually going to pay twice what you borrowed by the time that you're done. That compares with 70 to 90% direct grants that were available in the 80s and earlier. The town will issue a general obligation bond to secure this loan and thus, we need a two-thirds vote here tonight if it is to be approved. The loan repayment will be roughly $575,000 per year over 20 years and it's very easy to calculate without interest. There will be some public share of that. Article 19 will determine the size of that, of the loan repayments because the public owns some of the properties in the district. The bulk of the repayments will be financed by betterments charged directly to the properties in the district that will be served, the private properties. The district, the in-district property owner's cost in addition to a betterment will involve operation and maintenance based on flow, which will be metered. We're estimating about $225 per average per home. As somebody was saying last night, of course, you know, nobody pays the average. Everybody pays somewhere around hopefully that number. And there will also be a one-time tie-in cost to get the pipe from the house to the street because the public responsibility only goes to the flange at the property boundary. And based on the Chelmsford history, we're estimating that's about $15 a foot. And the length will vary depending on the house, whether the connection's in front or in back. The town will obtain a group contract so that those people that decide to hook up initially will get as much of a discount as is possible with group purchasing. Actually, of course, there'll only be an operating and maintenance cost, that is, the annual cost for putting sewage in the pipe if the property is connected. But betterments will be charged to all properties whether connected or not. The particular detailed scheme that we adopt for how we go about betterments and there's a lot of details. It starts off with a decision tree. Do you go on front foot or do you go on unit measurement? And then there are a number of subsidiary decisions. That will come back and be determined by town meeting, by a bylaw. And in fact, Doug, one of the first things we did in the Sewer Action Committee, Doug Haley, the health director, has a model bylaw which we looked at and then went on with other planning and we'll have to come back and get very serious about that if the district is to go forward. But on some formula, betterments will be charged to all properties, whether there's a building on that property or not. It will be based on what can be built on the property by right under zoning. What's permitted for you to do or to expand without having to get any further approvals. The betterments will be assessed quarterly. They'll appear on your tax bill for 20 years unless they're paid off earlier and probably most of them will, or at least those in the properties that are sold. It will constitute however lean until paid. You have seen on the green sheets in the lobby, calculation models for the betterment. That's a rough model that we have worked out. If a 0% subsidy is voted under Article 19, it'll be $9,600 per the average home. That is assuming that an average home is expanded. To get to a proportionality factor, to run through it and make a simplistic model in the district, we assumed first off, everybody had four bedrooms and the average is only 3.6 in the district. And then we assumed you added another bedroom, that you expanded the house and proportioned on the Title V formula although that formula has no direct relevance to this district because we know the actual water flows from the water district metering. And it came out $9,600. We think that's very conservative. We think it'll actually be less, but let's take that as a working number. That's $120 a quarter for 20 years. Now, the taxpayers not in the district will also pay because you as the taxpayer, well, taxpayers in the district too will pay. But the taxpayers in the town generally will pay as the collective owners of the public properties. When we went through and we looked at all the public properties and we've taken everything and projected it to build out. When we went through and we looked at all the vacant properties and projected them to build out, our first take on the thing was, "Oh, gosh, the public share is 25%." And we got to scratching our heads and said, "Wait a minute now. We're counting properties that will never be built. One of them's owned by the MBTA. One of them indeed is the Adams Street property, part of which will be infiltrating the stuff on. The rest of it, there is some space, but realistically, we're probably not going to build anything on it and we, the public, have control of that. So we took that part out of the build-out. And when we got back to the properties that actually have something on it that is being used, principally the schools, but there's also a fire station and the CD building, et cetera, it came out about 14%. The calculation model you've seen shows that that's about 5 cents on the tax rate or $12 per year on that average elusive $240,000 house that somehow we all own. We have a current window of opportunity which I suggest will pass. Title V has been a sea change as I have said. But as more people have to build those concrete retaining walls, those $30,000 systems, they quite logically and reasonably will not be interested in then converting to a sewer system. So the longer we live under the Title V regulations and the more of you that have to put a greater amount of your wealth into disposing of your wastewater, the less political will there will be for a sewer system, even though it is cheaper. We currently have also a very high level of DEP We currently have also a very high level of DEP cooperation and help. We have actually an ombudsman working with us at the DEP. Our hand is being held and we're being led through the process. Bureaucracies change. Believe me, I dealt with them in the 1980s, when promises were made and not kept. This time, they're working with us. They're not making promises about what will happen when we get there. We don't know if that would apply in the future. We also, as Nancy has indicated, can avoid a wasteful expense of the DEP mandated Central School Campus solution. Probably most importantly, we can grab the 0% loan opportunity. It's here this year. It will be there next year. Beyond that, we cannot read the future. It might be there, it might not. There were 90 and 70% grants. There is now a 50% subsidy in the form of interest-free loan. Let's not let it slip away. And probably lastly, and most personal, certainly to me and Nancy, you have a very high level of energy now from the Sewer Action Committee after almost two years of work, and I think we need to capitalize on that. It will not continue forever. I will step down now and get to the actual articles. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move to take up Article 19 before we take up Article 18.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any of the boards? No discussion? Any of the town meeting members saying nobody's standing? We'll vote. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We'll now move to Article 19. Article 19. Ms. Tavernier moves to amend Chapter D10B of the town bylaws to read as follows. The entire cost of laying out, constructing, and operating the sewage collection, treatment, and disposal facilities in the town shall be paid by a combination of sewer assessments on the land served by such facilities, including municipal and other public land, and by user charges. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The subject under Article 19 actually has been more widely debated in the past year than Article 18. After all, in 1986 and '88, we did decide to sewer, so the discussion primarily in the last year is how much should we pay as individuals? I'm sorry. Article 18 will be next, and that's where we will appropriate the $11.5 million. But because of the concern expressed that voters need to understand the full financial impact on them as individuals before they authorize the spending, that's why we've decided to take the article up first. This is the existing sewer bylaw that was voted in 1988. The first part of it is not under discussion tonight. It's the second half, in which it says that the town pay only a portion of the cost, et cetera, and that portion decided in 1988 was 50%. Now, I think it's important to understand, at that time, the state was granting, giving grants that were equivalent to 50% of the cost of the entire system. And so essentially, that is, the local share then was 50% of the capital cost. So when this decision was made in 1988, it was actually 50% of the 50%, and in reality, was a 25% share by the taxpayers and a 25% share by the users. For a long time during this current debate, we have used the 25% figure as the most likely scenario, because as Dorey explained, that's what we were assuming the public share was. But we're coming to you tonight with a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen that is consistent with the wording that the moderator just used. And the Board of Selectmen received input from the Sewer Action Committee, who recommended to us that we adopt a 100% user-funded system of assessments, which would require no tax subsidy of any private properties. The tax obligation would only be for the publicly-owned properties in the district. And in this case, that would be the Charter Road School Complex and the two-town properties in South Act. And as Dorey said, in the model we're showing tonight, that it ranges between 13 and 15% depending on how you define sewer unit, but we're using 13.6% in the model we have tonight. So this is the proposed wording that the moderator just read. And while it may not look like it says what I just said, this is what Town Council has constructed for us, and he assures us, and when we read it carefully, it does indeed say what we're proposing is a 100% user-funded system. There have been strong opinions expressed throughout this, that residents who will not directly benefit from this first sewer system should not have to help pay for it. There is also an argument that the first sewer system will benefit everyone indirectly, and therefore, they should help pay. Part of that argument is what I opened with, the five compelling reasons. But at this point, the major boards have taken the politically expedient route and are recommending the 100% user-funded system. And keep in mind again that that includes a tax contribution for the public properties. Earlier, the share was 25%, but when we removed all the vacant parcels, I want you to understand, that's when it moved down to the 13 to 14%. This does not mean that any town meeting member should be discouraged from amending the motion, because this does bring out a philosophical discussion that I think would be valuable for the town meeting. However, the board recommendations will remain firm in that regard. We are proposing the 100% user-funded system. Now, these next two overheads are just exactly what you have in your green handout. The first shows the betterment impact under the three scenarios. I've put the 50/50 on because that's what's existing. The zero is what we are recommending, the 25, just for comparison. The betterment, again, and you have that vocabulary to keep referring to also, that's what each property owner in the district, an average house, would pay a one-time fee over 20 years, and then broken down by year, and then by quarter, because that's the way it would come out in the tax bill. So that's what the three scenarios are for the betterment. These are the three scenarios, with the taxpayer impact, the zero, again, being just responsibility for the public share. The 25% would be a 25% tax subsidy, which in effect is only a 12% tax subsidy, because, again, 13% you're obligated for, and then that would be a 12% subsidy totaling 25. And it shows you what the 50/50 impact would be in the tax split. So I would say at this point, the Board of Selectmen, again, supports the wording as proposed, and let the discussion begin.
I'll recognize now the Finance Committee. Mr. Johnson.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. We feel that a user-funded system is a fair system, and we'd point out that a, there's approximately a 50% subsidy with a 0% loan, so we recommend approval of this article.
Okay, it's open for comment now by the town meeting members. People wishing to speak can certainly do so by going to a microphone. I'll recognize the gentleman at the back.
Yeah, Don Perkins, Spring Hill Road. I just have a question that goes something like this. I'm told from the presentation that the plant on Adam Street will ultimately service the whole town. Does the cost of the plant get included in the charges to the first district that gets sewered? Or is there some way of apportioning the total cost of that plant to the whole town?
Mr. Hunter.
The short answer is no, but let me expand on that a little bit. If we get approval to go into the river, the whole town could be sewed through Adam Street. When we get to Article 20, we'll talk a little bit about other possibilities. The biggest cost in the system is the piping. And even assuming we can put as much wastewater as we want into the river, it may well be, on further professional study, that it would be cheaper to get infiltration sites elsewhere, in or out of town, and transmit wastewater from some parts of town there. And we have not factored any treatment plant size for other than this district. This treatment plant is essentially unitized. It will add process lines as the district enlarges, but we're not asking the first district to pay for built-now capacity for another district later.
The gentleman at the back.
Martin Gretz, Stowe Street, just outside the Middle Fort-Ponbrook Sewer District. And I appreciate Ms. Tavernier being forthright in calling this a politically expedient article. We seem to have become a bit meaner-spirited since 1986. I, for one, have a working septic system with no indication that I'm going to have to spend a lot in the near future to rebuild it, and I can look out over Jones Field and see my neighbors on Maple Street who will get the benefit of the sewer, so why should I help pay for it? Because I live in Acton. This is a community. The reason we form communities is so we can get together and make life easier for each other by helping to make the things and put in place the things that do do that. One of these is a sewer system. And if we tell the people who are going to use the sewers, okay, it's all on you, then what happens when something comes around to us? And they come back and say, well, we don't need to help you out. It's just another user fee. Well, why don't we extend that to everything else we do in town? Put the schools on a user-fee system so I don't have to pay taxes to support the schools. Let the people who send their children there pay the necessary cost to educate them. Let's go on a fee-for-service basis for the police and the fire department. Seems to me that if we're going to improve life in the town, then all of us get the benefit of it. I am perfectly happy with the original bylaw that shares this cost 50% regardless of what we get from the state. Now, if we want to modify the percentage, fine, but I think that we are obligated, as members of the community, to take some of the cost of building this sewer system and starting the process on the entire town, and not putting the entire burden on just those people who will be hooked into it.
And if I'm not mistaken, the next motion will be the answer to your prayer. Gentlemen at the front.
Well, it may not be exactly. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment to Article 19. And the amendment would be as follows. To see if the town will amend Chapter D10B of the town bylaws by changing the percentage contribution of the town as follows. 75% of the cost shall be borne by the owners of the lands in the Middle Fort-Ponbrook Sewer District, and the remainder shall be paid by the town through general appropriations.
Just one second. Sir, would you, would you come to the, and discuss this with Town Council? Because the wording that I think you worked out with them, and the wording that you read was a little bit different, and something was left out.
Okay.
And because it was left out, it's incomplete. So if you would just step up here. What I will do is, I have not accepted the amendment yet until it's correct. I'll continue to let people speak, and I think, Mr. Edelman, I think you were next, if I'm not mistaken. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I know that Mrs. Tavernier was not talking to me when she invited modifications from the floor. I remember my outing last night. I was going to actually...
Well, you didn't even vote for your own amendment until, you know, what can I say?
Well, at least you didn't ask to count it, so...
You're correct.
I was actually going to speak in favor of the, see, I don't, I don't, well, I'll go ahead. In favor of the motion, because I think that, I was going to speak in favor, probably for the same reason my other prior speaker spoke against it. I think that it does, in fact, allow us, regardless of our participation in the ultimate sewerage of Acton, to support the municipal properties, which we all do use. And I would agree, that is the price of admission, that if we live in Acton, we must pay for the municipal services that we all use as a community, not individually as homeowners. As some of you may know, I happen to live in a condominium with a private treatment plant. That doesn't mean a free treatment plant. It means a treatment plant that was constructed 25 years ago, before Title V, before a lot of other regulations. Probably not necessarily to be kind to the environment, but because it was required. It was built, not with the benefit of tax money, and has been operated and maintained, again, without the benefit of tax revenue. So I think that when people look at the broader view, it's impossible to avoid the evaluation of individual expenses. We pay about $350 a year per household. That's at Nagog Woods for the operation and maintenance of the treatment plant. I think that the current proposal, in fact, I didn't think I'd get to speak so soon. Someone had asked me to put it back up, and maybe that's a good thing to do, if I could ask for that to go back up. It shows under the 0100, we're still paying, I guess it's about 15%, 13 to 15% for the municipal properties, the schools, the fire station, the other municipal properties, and presumably in future districts, the same would be true. So I tend to favor this. Whether it's politically expedient or whether it's fair, I think remains on the vote that we'll ultimately take. I would propose that it's fair, because it allows us to get moving on sewers, and it allows us to, each of us, participate in sewer-ing the municipal properties while not just putting people who either are out of the district, or because they're in a property served by a private treatment plant, at an economic disadvantage, who would very likely then, regardless of the vote in this article, then ultimately vote down sewer-ing itself. And I think it's time to sewer. My property will never be sewed, but I think that I want to pay for sewers as proposed tonight, and I think we should do it now. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the back.
I think this young lady was before you.
They were up before you were? Boy, the gentlemanliness of all this is terrific. The lady at the back, then.
Helen Probst, who lives in Putter Drive. Putter Drive is approximately a block and a half from Adam Street. We are not in the new sewer district, although the pipe's going to go right down Parker, right past the entrance to our house. We were in the original district, and my husband and I were blessing our lucky stars that we were so close to Adam Street. Of course we'd be sewer, it's not even an issue. I was quite discomfited to see the new district plan. I understand that it was necessary because of state regulations and that the capacity was not appropriate or whatever. And I am, you know, absolutely positively favorable about sewer-ing, getting all the way to the school department, because I think that's very important. I did have a question, however. Something was mentioned about properties would be assessed, they're charged, they're betterment-charged, based on their total district. I guess I want a clarification of the term "user-funded." Are we talking about just this small little, you know, few little houses? Are we talking about the fact that I'm going to be, hopefully, in one of the first expanded districts, and I'm going to be assessed a betterment now because the pipe's going past the front of my street, and I'm not going to be... past the front of my street, and I'm not going to be sewed? So I guess I'd like some clarification on what "user" means, vis-a-vis the present district, the hope for additional capacity for that said district, and then, of course, for what happens if we do get DEP capacity advances, and we get to go to the Aspet River and all that kind of stuff? I mean, basically, you add charges as of that, you know? So I'd like some clarification on the word "user."
Mr. Hunter.
We regret that we had to shrink the district. We hope we'll expand it again. The district is shrunken at the moment, you're not in it, you will not be charged a betterment. If the district expands the boundary such that your property will be in it, and you can connect to the sewer, then you will be charged a betterment.
But does that change everybody's betterment charge? I mean, is it a rolling betterment charge in this 20-year plan? I mean, you've got your solid number of $11 million, and you divide it by 1,200 sewer units? Or you divide it by, you know, 3,000 sewer units and still give them their betterment charge?
I can't off the top of my head give you units for the expanded district, because I don't think we did that number.
Well, right.
But the cost to build the system for the FAT district, shall we say, is $24 million, so your division changes. I would expect that it would work out probably, well, roughly equivalent. The pipes are more expensive than the plant, you're going to add a good bit more pipe, you're also going to expand the pipe, you're going to get to a bigger number, you divide it by the units. But I think you're talking same order of magnitude.
Okay. Thank you.
And now, do we become gentlemanly again, or is it your turn, sir? I can't really recall. It's your turn.
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Richard Fallon, Faulkner Hill Road, which I understand is in the district. I simply had a number of questions that I could ask that might be clarified. And the first one, perhaps, I think Mr. Hunter may be addressed, was the notion of, since it is a 0% loan, that that, in a certain sense, is a subsidy, and I can understand how it'd be a pretty significant subsidy over 20 years. I think he said something along the lines of 50%. Would it be fair to say that the 0% loans were not available back in '86? Is a 50% subsidy from the state through that, is that a reasonable, is that what I heard, and is that a reasonable perspective?
The money in the '80s was a grant. The state simply kicked in so much money, and we rose, would have borrowed or raised and appropriated so much money, and you put it in. There was a time, we'd done this, 1966, the federal government paid for 95% of it.
Yeah.
Of course, it was only $4 million then, too. Whether 50% is reasonable or not, I'll leave to your political judgment. It is a very complicated financial scheme that has been constructed by bond counsel at Palmer &amp; Dodge, who happens to be the, Bob Hale, who happens to be the guru for this in the state. The federal government gave the states some money to replace the old grants. The state appropriated some additional money, invested it. That stream of money and some bonding the state does produces money that is used to offset the interest rates on the bonds, so that if you take a financial model, and you assumed you were borrowing at 5% for 20 years, you pay twice. If it's interest-free, of course, you just pay what the principal is. It's the best deal on the market at the moment. And we desperately want to grab it before it gets worse, because it's been better in the past, the trend line is not good.
Thank you. Another question I had, again, on percentages. I understand that the town bylaw now says 50%. And a few people, or perhaps one person, mentioned, "Well, if you include the school and other public properties in the current district, that would be about 14%," and the figures indicate that. However, and I think this should be clear on any bylaw we amend, was the assumption, that 14% versus 50% doesn't seem to be correct, or I may be mistaken, because was the assumption when, if the tax, in other words, if there's a tax, 50% to the whole town, was it assumed that public properties would also pay the betterment or not? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Yes, there's a very easy answer to that, and the public properties do not pay a betterment. Very frankly, from a political point of view, the selectman would love to charge the school district a betterment, even though it comes all out of your pocket, but it's illegal. The, one, a public entity cannot be charged a betterment. And the percentages weren't calculated on dollars of tax or anything like that. What we did was, we proportioned the properties on assumed flows, well, actually, on actual flows of water. It's the fluid flow that is the important thing in this district. And we went through a model, which will undoubtedly get more sophisticated as we move toward betterments, to proportion one property to the other, to give you at least a rough financial model, what betterments might look like. And when we talk about 13% or 14% or 15%, we're talking about projected build-out sewer flow from those properties.
Would that be the operating and maintenance cost, then?
It should be proportional to the operating and maintenance cost, yes. You would expect the O&M would be a direct correlation of flow, with one caveat, and that is, I would suspect that we would probably have an increasing scale on usage charge, because it's based on water usage. At a reasonable point, it would start to go up fairly sharply to induce conservation. But roughly, you're talking about proportionality to flow.
So, and again, just for clarification, that operation, whether it's 50%, 0%, or 25% of the tax, that operating and ma, that flow charge is going to be paid by the taxpayers anyhow?
The flow charge will be paid by the users. House A on Street B will get a bill, just like it gets a water bill, and it will pay it. And taxpayer C, who lives over here on Street D, that's not in the district, will never even see those bills. And also, the government properties, the school district will get a sewer bill.
Either way, and maybe I'm not making clear, but it's a big difference. In other words, it's not a situation where it would have been 50%, it's 50% now, and with the 0% tax included, it's 14%. It's really 50, it's really, it's going to be 14%. The 14% you mentioned, 13% or 14% or whatever, it's going to happen, whatever. Whatever we vote on Article 19, that 14% is going to occur, which was mentioned by Ms. Tavernier.
No, not necessarily. There are capital costs and operating costs. Put the operating costs to one side. They will be paid by the consumers, public or private. There are capital costs. The capital cost right now, if we go zero subsidy, which is the Board of Selectmen's motion, will be paid, as we indicated, about 13%, 14%, will be paid directly by you, the taxpayer, who own those public properties. The remainder of the capital cost will be divided among the private users. If you go some higher percentage, let's say the existing bylaw is 50/50. 50% of the capital cost would there then be paid by us collectively as the taxpayers, and 50% would be apportioned among the non-public properties in the district. We got it?
Yeah, it's a little complicated.
I'll tell you what, so I'm going to interrupt you now, because I think you may have a number of specific questions. And I'm going to ask you to come down, and if you wish, discuss them with them privately, and get your answers, so that we can get more people to speak.
Thank you very much.
Sure. I'm going to turn the microphone back to the gentleman who has the amendment. And you may make your amendment now, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to amend Article 19 as follows. I move to amend Chapter D10B of the town bylaws to read as follows. Seventy-five percent of the cost of laying out, constructing, and operating the sewage collection, treatment, and disposal facilities in the town shall be paid by a combination of sewer assessments on the land served by such facilities, including municipal and other public land, and by user charges, and the remainder shall be paid by the town through general appropriations.
Thank you for being so patient. Do I have a second to that amendment? Okay, now, there is an amendment on the table that virtually substitutes for what was the main motion. So we will now discuss the amendment. It is really like discussing the motion before. You may speak to your amendment, sir.
Thank you. There's two main reasons why I'm offering this amendment. The first is that, although this does not set a legal precedent in a sense that future districts would necessarily have to be paid for in the same way, it does amend the bylaw, so that that is our beginning point, and it does set, I guess, in a sense, a moral precedent. If the first district is paid 100% by the users, it's going to be hard to argue that the future districts should not be assessed the full charge as well. And why is that important? Mostly because each district, on a per-house or per-lot basis, is going to become successively more expensive to sewer. That doesn't mean that each district is going to be more expensive, but on a per-house basis, it will be more expensive. And the costs to the owners are going to become even more onerous than they are already. To the extent that the costs are shared by the general tax base, the costs of the whole project become averaged and borne more evenly. I'm not suggesting that the town pay for 100% or even for 50%, but I am suggesting that we share in a portion of this as a way of averaging out the cost to all of us, and the cost will be more nearly the same. Secondly, that with the first district to be sewed, there are going to be benefits that all of us are going to share. For one, we minimize the chance that the pollution of the groundwater that we share will happen. And secondly, that as the businesses are attracted, hopefully, to South Acton, they will bring in revenue to the town, and we all get to share in that. An earlier speaker suggested a 50/50 split. I think that's going a little too far, and the reason is, is that this is a long timeline project. Those of us who will not be in the first district, may not be sewed for many, many years, and I think to share more than 25% of the cost would be onerous on those people outside the first district. So to some extent, this is a bit of an arbitrary figure that I've come up with. But the most important point is to set, at least, a moral precedent that says, to some extent, we're all in this together. It's going to better all of us. Thank you.
The lady at the back, and to the amendment, please.
Okay. Nancy Sable, Bankside Hollow. I also live in an area with a private treatment plant. And in the last several years, I've supported a number of issues here that I didn't have a personal vested interest in. But from the first, something felt very wrong with this one. So I sat down to think about what was different. And I think there is a basic difference. And the difference is that I do not have a right, I will never be entitled to be part of the benefits of this. And with all the other systems, whether I choose to use it or not, I have that right. And it doesn't seem fair that any citizen should be asked to pay for something that they don't have a right to participate in. And I want to agree with what a previous speaker said, that I believe there are a number of people here, at any rate myself, who will vote against it if it's a split. But I really believe that the town should have sewerage system, and I would vote for it if the split remains 0100.
Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator, I think there is still some confusion, perhaps, at what the percentages proposed, whether they're 25, 75, or 0100 really mean, so let me give it a try. There are the users of, the potential users of the system as proposed, which include some municipal properties. And the taxpayers really end up potentially wearing two hats in paying for this. One, as owners of these, of the schools, of the fire station, the Civil Defense Building, which are the users, the taxpayers will pay the proportional share of those properties using the system, which is this 13%, 14% of the total. That's a given. And that's not part of these percentages that are being proposed. Under the original selectmen's motion, the second hat that the taxpayers wear as just generally subsidizing the system, that part would be at zero. So I think we need to be clear, first of all, as whether this amendment or any other means 25% subsidy, which I think it does, in addition to what the taxpayers pay as owners of the schools and the fire station and so on. So I hope that does not create further confusion. As to the specifics of this amendment, I will oppose it for these reasons. One is the one that the lady just mentioned. There is a significant percentage of people in town that do not have access to the system, never will. As opposed to police, fire, and schools, whether you use them or not, at least the opportunity is there. Second, the taxpayers have already provided a very substantial subsidy to this proposal in the form of 40 acres of land worth a couple million dollars. Could be sold, you could put some houses on it, it'll perk.
Not for long.
The taxpayers have also provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in, over the years, in studies and various projects we devoted to the sewers, plus innumerable hours of municipal employees' time. So I think there is already a very substantial subsidy that's going in from the general tax base. And finally, the costs to the users, to the individual homeowners, on the 0100 original motion, which I favor, are very reasonable. And the reasons have already been given, I won't dwell on them. The 0% interest being the most significant one. It's a very fair proposal, it's a very intelligent proposal. If we start changing it, I will support the same argument that was already made. The chances of the main sewer article passing diminish. For the sake of having the best chance of the main sewer article passing, I think we should stick to the 0100 original motion.
I think the Finance Committee has caressed and has an official position on the amendment. I think they may need some clarification. Is that correct, Mr. Johnston?
The Finance Committee has caressed and recommends against the amendment. One point is that the Adams Street is a, I don't know, 30 acres, 40 acres, each acre which, in Acton, if it could be a building lot overlooking the river, might be worth $100,000, so that's maybe $3 million of public money is going into the system as it is. We feel that's adequate subsidy.
Gentleman at the front, microphone.
Yes, I'd like to, Ed Geithner, 431 Main Street. I'd like to speak in favor of the amendment. There are additional shared facilities that we haven't discussed, and I'm speaking primarily of what I believe is called the Interceptor Pipe, which is the main pipe through which all effluent will flow to the Adams Street disposal site. This will be used by not just the district we're talking about now, but by other future districts that are using the Adams Street site as well. I think in, it's a matter of fairness, that the cost for that portion of the construction be borne by the town as a whole. And that's why I think the 25% is a reasonable percentage, and I speak in favor of it.
Gentleman at the side microphone.
Ed Miller, 95 Concord Road. On this amendment, or on the basic article, I have a question regarding a scenario of the future. What will be the impact on the betterment rates as we piecemeal, go about adding sewer districts? Will those betterments vary from time to time as the costs escalate? And how will we understand what we're voting for here tonight, unless we can see the larger picture, the total approach to sewer-ing Acton?
Mr. Hunter.
Betterments will be determined district by district. The Middle Fort-Ponbrook skinny district, if you will, that we have here, will have a betterment. If, let's take a scenario, it's five years before we go to the FAT Middle Fort-Ponbrook district, that additional district will have a betterment. This is an assessment, it's assessed, it's a fixed charge at that point, paid off over 20 years. Yes, the subsequent districts will probably have different numbers. And yes, there's some possibility that the betterment assessed against properties sewed later will be later will be greater. In fact, with inflation, it's probably almost a probability, although nothing in life is certain.
Lady at the back.
Ann Forbes, 25 Martin Street. I have a question for the moderator. For those of us, and there are many of us here tonight, who are due to be within the first district, I think we're well aware of the much greater benefits to us in the near term than to anyone else here who will be voting. In order to make the most informed vote that we can on this amendment, however, which is very, very tempting, since we know that the charges to us will be more in the near term, I think it's important for us to know what should happen if Article 18 should fail tonight. Is there any recourse to revisit the major question in the near future? And if so, procedurally, what is that recourse? I know I have read it, it's probably in the back of the warrant. I hazely remember something about a couple of, something like two people calling to revisit a question. But I think it would benefit everybody here tonight in making this decision if we could have a review of what that procedure is.
Sure, I would assume if any of, if Article 19 or 18 in particular is lost and does not pass, then clearly, if the meeting, this meeting, does not take further action, this meeting will not have created a situation where we can go ahead, we're searing the town. If, let's say, 18 tonight, lost, let's say it lost, lost at 9 o'clock. Then at 9:15 or 9:30 or 10, someone could move to reconsider the article, and if 2/3 of the people here voted to reconsider it, it would come back for another vote. If we go from this meeting tonight with 18 or 19 lost, let's say 18 loses, and someone says, well, that was a bad decision, we would like to reconsider it tomorrow night, or at some adjourned session of this town meeting. They can post their notice to reconsider it with the town clerk eight hours before the beginning of the session in which they wish to have it reconsidered. And at that session, they can make a motion for reconsideration, and it will take 3/4 of the people who are town meeting members present to pass the reconsideration motion. If it fails, then of course it could be brought up at another town meeting, separate and distinct from this town meeting. I don't mean this session of town meeting, I mean another town meeting.
A separate town meeting. Okay, then a follow-up question. What if...
I thought I answered that fairly well, actually.
You did. You did. And it just raised another one. Try another scenario. What if Article 19 should pass with the 25-75% split, and Article 18 should then fail? Is there any possibility of a reconsideration of the percentage split, since that article has passed and not failed?
Of course.
You can also reconsider an article in the same way that has passed.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And now, Mr. Perkins.
Oh yeah, I have a, I have a que, I, well, I'd like to have the amendment read again, please. Could you do that?
I don't have the amendment in front of me, the gentleman who made it holds it. I don't know if the town council has one. Do you have one, Mike? Here's notes. Go ahead, sir, get up and read the amendment again, please.
I move to amend Chapter D10B of the town bylaws to read as follows. Seventy-five percent of the cost of laying out, constructing, and operating the sewage collection, treatment, and disposal facilities in the town shall be paid by a combination of sewer assessments on the land served by such facilities, including municipal and other public land, and by user charges, and the remainder shall be paid by the town through general appropriations.
Oh yeah, that's what I thought it said. That means that the 75-25 split applies to all the user charges of everybody, as well as the initial betterment.
Let me, let me ask, do we believe that's correct? Mr. Perkins, make the statement again, please.
Which one? The last one?
The last one.
Yeah, the way I interpret the amendment, it says that the operating costs and the user charges are going to have the same share split, the 75-25 split, as the betterments, the initial capital cost. That's the way it sounds.
What you're suggesting is the O and M will be 75% on the users and 25 on the taxpayers?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Okay, well, I don't think that's possible, but could you comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. Callahan.
I don't believe you can assess the O and M to the taxpayers.
I agree with the comment that the way it is, the amendment now reads, that it provides for a split of operating costs as well, so the town would pick up 25% of the operating costs in the future.
So I recommend voting against the amendment.
I think the gentleman at the front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill McKinnis, Winchester Drive, I'm also a member of the Sewer Action Committee. I'd just like to make one other point. I don't know how relevant this is, but I believe under the 14% town share, which is called a zero subsidy, I believe that will fit within the existing tax levy. Is that correct, Nancy? And consequently, no debt exclusion override would be required to go forward with that. However, if we increase the town's share up to 25%, I believe that puts us a lot closer to requiring a debt exclusion override.
Mr. Tavitt, do you wish to address that?
Please. Yes. This would not be contingent on a debt exclusion override in either case. On this capital share, taxpayers under the annual debt payment, under the 0% scenario, the annual payment for the public properties would be $78,000. That's an amount that really is small enough, relatively speaking, out of a $12 million budget, that it can be absorbed in that. If we were at the 25-75 split, the annual debt payment would be $144,000. Still, that's something you could plan to have in your operating budget for 20 years, but at that point, the decision, the board may wish to put that on the special election as a debt exclusion. The 0, I would think we would not. The 25% would be subject to discussion. Beyond that, at 50%, we would definitely have to do that. And if I could just clarify the, because someone else asked me to clarify next time I spoke, if the 25% amendment fails and the 100% user fails, we're still at 50-50, because that's the existing bylaw. So just to add one more puzzle to you.
Gentlemen at the front.
Yes, thank you, Adam. My name is Marco Shidlot, Topor River Road. It was, it was, Mr. Hunter mentioned here before, in relation to Title V, that if we postpone bringing sewage to the town, as time goes by and more and more houses get their septic system changed, there's going to be less political will to support it. Well, I want to present myself as an example of somebody who already went through that process. In November of 93, we moved into Acton, and as part of our move, we had to replace the septic system. The new septic system was installed in the front of the house. By the time we were done, we had spent $29,000. I want to be a good citizen. I want to cooperate, like the gentleman, the first gentleman that spoke said so. But while we all share with the police and the fire and the schools, and while there are even people in this town who pay taxes for the schools even though they don't have children, there is nothing equivalent, nothing equivalent, to the expense that one has to go through when one needs to change a septic system. On top of that, it has been pointed out here that it's going to be a very slow process of bringing sewage to the town, 10, maybe 20 years. In that period, many more houses, many, perhaps your house, will have the septic system fail, and you will be faced with the expense of 10, 20, or 30,000 dollars. Now, I want to be a good citizen, I want to cooperate, but I think that the 0-100 solution is a much better solution than to ask a further increase on the taxes of people who are already paying huge sums of money to keep their houses in working condition. I think this is entirely distinct, and I think it's unfair. And one last point. We happen to be here tonight conscious citizens, but we are still the minority in the town. There are many, many people who are not attending this meeting today. And Article 18 says that there will have to be an ele, a vote 45 days after the, after this town meeting. I, I'm, I take very serious the comment that Article 19 was, the original proposal was brought up that way because of political expediency. I'm afraid that if we go with an approach that raises further the taxes of the citizens, especially in line of what we already heard last night about a very tough fight next year in which we may have to do some overrides, I think the rest of the town may well turn down the whole prospect of the sewage down. So I, I think you should keep that in mind, and I'm definitely against the amendment.
Mrs. Stuntz.
I would just like to ask a question, at least, Stuntz, 27 Central Street. Following up on what Charlie asked, and his understanding of the article was a little different, of the amendment was a little different from mine, so I wanted to see exactly what it was. He said in his statement that he assumed that the 25% would be added to the 13%. My assumption, or maybe I misunderstood you, Charlie, it, does the 25% cover the 13% or not?
My, my understanding of the amendment is that it would be 25% tax subsidy, and then because the users would pay, would be an additional 13% on top of that, which would bring it to a 39% share for the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
That's the way the...
Mr. Adelwood.
Thank you. Just a, just a question, because the numbers are now beginning to swirl around a bit. Besides the fact that the current amendment, which I don't support, shifts the operating expense as well to the people who are not participating in the district, and perhaps is not legal anyway, the 0-100 is a 15 approximately percent support to the public properties. A prior speaker made the comment, and I hope someone will correct me if I'm misunderstanding everything we talked about tonight, but if you're in the district, the split shouldn't matter. If it's 100-0 or 0-100 or 50-50, 25-75, if you're in the district and your house is connected to the pipe, your cost will be the same, whether half of it comes from the tax rate and half from a betterment, or all from a betterment. Can someone help me with this? No. See, you're smarter than I am. I didn't go to the Acton schools, I'm sorry.
Can I show?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, it's, it's quite a difference. It's 9,600 at the zero subsidy scenario, this is per average house betterment. It's 8,300 at the, at 25, and it's 5,500-50 at the 50-50.
Oh, no, 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 I, I followed that, but you have to add to these figures the other half that you would pay from the taxes. Doesn't it get you back to 9,600 either way you do it?
No, it's additional. This, everyone will pay this tax increase, whether you're in the district or out. The people in the district will pay their betterment plus the tax. Is that what you're talking about? The tax, the, I don't know what you're asking.
Okay. Okay, I got it. Class of 96.
Gentlemen at the front.
Harry King, 406th Grade Elmway. We've already established a precedent in the town when Nagog Woods was built by putting in a sewer system for that particular development, at which time the town did not participate in the, in the financing of that or in the maintenance of it. In view of the fact that this has already been established as a precedent as to how the town would proceed with searing, it would seem to me that that precedent should carry over in any future sewer development. And I would therefore, this precedent having been established, I would oppose the amendment.
I'm going to, I'm going to recognize the gentleman in back of you now, because you've already spoken to the amendment, sir. Yes?
Michael Biola, 80 Willow Street. If I'm getting these numbers right, which I probably am not at this point, but my understanding is that, first of all, if we have a 0-100%, the, the public taxes will be paying 14%. However, as was pointed out, we have already paid for land and other costs. So to put it in percentages, which wasn't mentioned before, that means that with the 0% 100%, that the split is actually roughly 35% public financing and 65% by the people in the district. Now, if this last figure also adds, we're up to 59% for the public. Somebody, that, the question over there, you came up with a 39% figure, but I, I'm estimating, the property was mentioned, about $3 million, so for the basic cost, not for the operating cost, for the basic cost, the town has already provided 20% of the total cost of the project.
Well, that's extrapolating pretty far. The property was purchased in 1966 for something like $10,000. Doesn't matter what it's worth, we don't have to pay that now. And from 1982 to 1987, we had spent $500,000 on studies and hydrogeological work and so forth. So let's say, over the last 30 years, we have spent roughly $550,000. But that's been spread out all over, so that really isn't part of this, this, I don't think.
Except for the reduced tax base, well, once we get more students at first.
It's an argument for, yes, the taxpayers somewhere in the last three decades have subsidized.
So it's more like half a million.
Let me make a suggestion that, that may speed the thing up a little bit. If you have questions, specific questions, which you think only pertain to yourself and your understanding of this thing, come down and ask the people who are at the front, as opposed to going back and forth with one person, which may take five or 10 or 15 minutes. Basically, what we're trying to do here is argue a position. I know you're trying to reach a position, but if the facts you're looking for are just to answer some question you have, you may be better served, and I know everybody else is a lot better served, if you can come down and ask the questions at the front. If you have arguments to make, please make the arguments. Mr. Richter.
Very short one about the Nagog situation. The Nagog sewers were mandated, and I was on the Board of Health that did part of that mandating, because if they were not put in and put over into the Westford watershed, really, with your discharge, you would have polluted Nagog Pond, which is the public drinking water of our neighboring town Concord, and that could not be allowed. And, and even the construction of the sewers were, were spelled out, that they had to use malleable iron pipe rather than other kinds of pipe, because we wanted to decrease the, the leakage in the, in the pipe. And those are the things that have made Nagog, the Nagog area there a very fine place to live for a long time and upheld your values. I think you're very fortunate to have those sewers, and I think we should get on with the rest of the town now. Thank you.
Lady at the back.
I'm Claire Siska from Stowe Street. I'd just actually like to move the previous question.
Go here a second. All in favor? Yes?
I think it's important that, the statement has been made, the question that I...
I have, it relates to whether or not an override would be required pursuant to passage of Article eighteen.
I know, I know, but I, it, your point of order is not accepted. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sit down, sir. We're gonna vote on the, I, I know what you're talking about, but I have to accept the motion, and unfortunately, you didn't get to ask your question. If the motion is voted down, you'll get an opportunity to ask your question. All right? All in favor of the motion to cut off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
Yeah.
Debate is cut off, we will vote on the amendment. This does not, by the way, stop the debate on the main motion. We're voting on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no.
No.
The amendment is voted down, we are now back discussing the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? I'll recognize the gentleman at the front.
Hi, my name is Henry Emmett, I live at three fifteen Nagog Hill Road. I am curious, it just seemed to be accepted, it, it, I think it's pretty important to the passage of either this main motion or the amendment, as to whether or not an override would be voted on by the town at large. I think that at this amend, amendment as it stands, revising the fifty-fifty percentages to zero-one-hundred makes it not only politically expedient, and I'm entirely convinced that's the sole motivation for it, and I also think it's a pie in the sky, but, you know, I, I think, I just have a, a very simple question, and I, and, and that is, 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 two, two different statements have been made. One that, is that there, an override would be required on Article eighteen, not Article nineteen, but if, but, but it pertains quite closely to the percentages as we see in the yearly budget figures, which the mayor put up, uh, it, whether or not it, it reaches the, you know, one hundred and forty-four thousand or two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar yearly threshold to trigger an override. So I'm, I'm pretty unclear, and one gentleman did make the statement, that's why I said a point of order, it seemed to be accepted statement or dogma that there was not gonna be an override, or that there is. So I'm, I'm asking that the presenters, and it's really pertains to Article eighteen, I guess.
You, you, answer the question, uh, please, if you can.
I think that's a subject for Article eighteen. This--
I, I disagree entirely.
Well, changing the bylaw is not contingent on a debt exclusion override, so that, an appropriation of money is where the, that discussion should take place.
But it, that's, that's not true, because the ratios which are, which are proposed in Article nineteen have a very direct bearing on whether or not it triggers, I think that people would be more able to objectively consider Article nineteen if they felt that there wasn't a contingency, as, I, I think it makes a great deal of difference as to whether or not the sewer system as a whole is going to have to be voted on by the town as a whole, or simply tonight in this room.
Uh, let me review again what I just said. The annual debt payment, the total amount of public dollars due under the model we have in front of us is seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's point four percent increase, um, five cent increase on the tax rate.
And you said that one hundred, one hundred and forty-four thousand was discussable, probably?
That, that is debatable. It, it's up to the Board of Selectmen to determine how any appropriation is funded.
And, and the two-eighty, so the fifty-fifty would--
I think, definitely.
Initiate an, an override.
I think that would be fiscally prudent, and I think--
But how is that fact not germane to the consideration of Article nineteen?
It's germane, but--
Okay, thank you.
It's germane.
I know, that discussion doesn't really, uh, we're not trying to trick each other here, and I really am gonna ask for us to be very civil to each other. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to slam down either a speaker or a member of the Board of Selectmen. I think we're coming close to it, and I really can't allow it. Dr. Donald?
I think it's, I think it's time. Hello? We've spent an hour and a half on, or an hour and forty minutes on this question, I think it's time to fish for cut bait, I move the question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Debate is cut off, we will now vote on the main motion as originally read and stated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to Article eighteen. It is a very, very long motion, and I will read it. Mr. Hunter moves that eleven million five hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing the planning, designing, and construction of sewers and wastewater treatment plant facilities for the middle Fort Pond Brook Sewer District, including without limitation, all costs therefore as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow eleven million five hundred thousand dollars, and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contact, contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or the financing thereof, and that the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project, and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, let me read you three sentences from the introduction to the nineteen sixty-six town report. What is to become of Acton's charm? What has happened to it already? Both of Acton's major streams are now polluted, many of Acton's woodlands are often soggy with water smells of sewage. There was an extensive report that year from the Sewer Committee that was to be in support of a group of articles which would have built a sewer system, which would have taken twenty-one years to complete, been paid for ninety-five percent with federal money, and we'd be enjoying it. Of course, it would have been expanded, because the town is expanding. The sewer report contains this sentence. There exists today, nineteen sixty-six, a sewer disposal problem in the Fort Pond Brook drainage basin. That was thirty-one years ago. Okay, I felt like the guy in the Warsaw commercial, you know, the one for insurance where they have the specialist waiting on the stage to give his speech, pops up, sticks up one slide, Warsaw picks it up and walks out. My slide would have been Title V. In the period of time, a couple of years since the Title V changes, there has been a hundred and nineteen percent increase in the repair and replacement in septic systems in town. Not related to Title V, I replaced mine in nineteen ninety-three. Uh, we've heard a couple of other comments about recent replacements. What we're proposing tonight is good news, bad news. The bad news, the largest public works project in the town history, it'll cost eleven and a half million dollars, that's, you know, about what we spend on one of the schools for a year, it's a lot of money. And it will be temporarily disruptive. The streets will be dug up in the sewer district progressively as the pipes are put down, and it will be right down the middle of the street, because the gas pipes are on one side, the water pipes are on the other, and it will make a traffic problem while it's going. But the, I think the operative word is temporary. The good news, which you've just voted, is the most, it will be paid essentially by the users, either the taxpayer users that own the properties, or the people that are living in the properties or doing business. The best part of the news is it is a permanent fix, and it costs less than the replacement of a temporary septic system. If the average cost of replacement of septic system is fifteen thousand dollars, and you finance it over the same period of time, you can spread your abatement out, it will more than double, so you're talking about a thirty thousand dollar plus number against something that we're conservatively projecting a betterment at nine thousand six, you throw in some tax money for the, for the taxpayers' part and say ten or eleven thousand dollars. And a sewer is better than a septic system. Why? Because even though we are proposing what looks like superficially a monster septic system, is actually a sewer system, which means the fluid, the liquid that goes out into the leach field is clear, there is no suspended solid. Your septic system, in the septic tank gathers a good bit of the solids that go out of your house, but not all of it. It is that suspended solid portion that goes out into your leach field, which eventually kills it, and why you build a very over-capacity leach field to start with. So no septic system, no matter how well-maintained, operates properly forever. The average is probably somewhere around thirty years, mine lasted thirty-three. A sewer system removes nitrates, phosphorus, nitrogen chemicals we don't necessarily want getting in the groundwater, and the modern system that we'll build involves an ultraviolet disinfection. What comes out is clean water. It's really almost a matter of regulatory ridiculousness that we just can't dump it in a brook and let it flow away someplace, but we have to infiltrate it under the current rules, there's a possibility later we may get in the river. Now, you've heard over and over again, but it bears repeating, there really on a soils' adaptability purpose, is only about fifteen percent of the town that's even good soils for septic systems. Most of your septic systems are in less than ideal soil. And you've seen the slides, and you know that as people have to build new septic systems, they're see, you're seeing more and more of these mounted systems. Why? Well, the Title V regulations, the new Title V regulations requires a higher height above groundwater, and it requires a different way of determining where groundwater is. You just don't dig a hole anymore and look in and see where the water is, you do this scientific analysis of the soil, which means you can't pick a dry day and get away with having your system lower. So the systems tend to be much higher, uh, mounds tend to result in the deprivation of trees. Indian Village is an area, for instance, where, uh, you know, they're around that thirty-odd year mark, I don't know if Nancy's replaced her system yet, I don't think so. Uh, that's why, you know, that's why they're two of us. I've replaced mine, so between us, we're average, I guess. But, uh, that's a lovely area with great big trees. If you need to put a mounted system in or a big wide system, the trees go. It's just, you can't have a tree on a septic field. Okay. Why didn't we start all this in nineteen sixty-six? Well, we had this bugaboo collectively, I wasn't here, uh, I was on duty in Virginia, long ways from thinking about septic systems, but collectively, we had this bugaboo about growth, and there was this feeling that, gosh, the town is growing quickly, and if we sewer it, we'll just explode and we'll have all this growth. But we had the growth, we didn't sewer. In nineteen sixty-six, there were twenty-six hundred dwellings in town. There are now six thousand. We had no sewers, it grew. In this district, which happens to be the most compactly settled part of town, there are exactly six vacant privately-owned parcels. Now, that's not to say that there's not room for expansion in this district. Particularly with sewers, people could add bedrooms, uh, we could get different commercial uses in. Kelly's Corner wants to change the, the mix, the, the building, Kelly's Corner, but you need sewers for that. Remember when Kmart, I think it was actually the predecessor to Kmart, used to have a restaurant in that building? Well, it's not there now, because they had no way to take care of the wastewater adequately. Uh, you couldn't put a laundromat in town, because you can't take care of the wastewater properly. There could be much more commercial diversity just in the existing areas that we have if we had sewers. Again, Exchange Hall is the poster child. The gentleman that owns that building without sewers cannot make enough money in the building to properly maintain it. You know, there are dance classes in there, they tell the kids to go to the head before they come to the building, because it has essentially zilch septic system capacity. And commercial development is not a bad word in this context, because we have a very good, very detailed, very comprehensive zoning built to a master plan, it's zoning that controls land use. We would like to develop in accordance with a master plan, and we can't without sewers. What are the system elements of a sewer? We, again, as I said before, we all tend to get focused on the plants. There are actually three elements. Basically, you have the treatment plant, three million eight, you have the interceptor, that's the big pipe down the street that gets the backbone, if you will, that gets it there, and we have the collector, which is the pipes in the street that come to you. Now, you can see, very roughly, each of those is equivalent in cost here, you put the two pipes together, and they well overpower the treatment cost, which was one of the answers I gave before, as you expand the piping network, you have to examine the economies of going someplace else for disposal, which we will as things progress. Now, what are we gonna build? We're gonna build a modern treatment plant. Now, we haven't built it, so I can't put a slide up, but there are nine private treatment plants in town now. Nagog, I believe, is the oldest, it's the biggest, and it's an older technology, there's nothing wrong with it, but you can build a better plant today. That is not a stable or a barn, that is Acorn Park's treatment plant. Those are very big expensive homes that Kirkware has been building in there, if any of you have gone in and looked at them. The first building, as you go by into this new expensive housing development, is their treatment plant, and it's in this building, doesn't look bad. Now, that's a good bit smaller building that we're probably talking about, it's a totally enclosed system, ours will be totally enclosed. Here's another modern treatment plant in town, that is the suburban Manor Nursing Home Treatment Plant. Both of these are what they call RBCs, we're going to build something that's a little newer in the technology trade, not necessarily all that much better, but it is a modern plant, these are modern plants. Now, when everybody talks about septic plant, sewer plant in Acton, inevitably, Maynard comes up, and, and with good reason, I mean, we, we actually have most of the Maynard Treatment Plant in Acton. This is the Maynard Plant, and you see here on this line, you've got the, the traditional big round basin with the thing in it, and then it revolves and so forth. That's an activated sludge system. They have an RBC system, which is enclosed, a more modern system, they also have the older activated sludge plant, that is not the plant we're going to build. Not the plant we're gonna build. Here's the Adams Street site, this is Adams Street, which was laid out in nineteen seventy, partly off here, and I have another slide if anybody really wants to see, it's where the leach field's gonna be. This is the Maynard Treatment Plant, that's the Acton-Maynard boundary, by the way. Here's the, the Maynard Treatment Plant, that's part of what Maynard owns in Acton. Here's where we're proposing to put the, the plant, on this road opposite Mallet Drive, come in here, we're gonna maintain the tree screening along here. There's always a consideration on a plant, as to what's going to be done with the odor. Let me tell you that we're going to handle that, we don't expect to be any problem. There have been complaints from time to time over the years about odor and the people who are in this area. Uh, most of it, as far as we can determine, is not actually from the Maynard Plant, it's because Maynard discharges into the asset above the dam, and over the years, there has been quite a sludge buildup in that impoundment behind the dam, and when the water level is a little low, you get an odor from it. Uh, Maynard and Acton is towns, had a big thing about that some years ago, the EPA was, and then didn't, give money for cleanup, and that, that stuff's still there, that's an entirely separate issue. If we ever go to the river, and we're not talking about it specifically tonight, but if we ever go to the river, we're gonna go to the river below the dam, so we don't add to that. But in any event, the treatment plant we're proposing will have a, what's called a biofilter, which will be located right where my pen is, which is sort of like a septic system in reverse for air. That is, the air that comes out of the plant will go into an underground leaching field, not to go down, but to come up, and will be chemically treated, and it's gonna get a lot of filtering before it ever gets out in the air, and I don't think you're gonna have any problem in that regard. Now, another question that often comes up when we're talking about septic systems, and I, I frankly, I'm kind of surprised up to this point, nobody's even raised it under the last article, is-- the last article, is what about hookups? You know, the pipe comes by, I get assessed my betterment, do I have to hook up immediately? The answer is no. You don't. You don't have to hook up at all if you don't want to, provided your septic system is operating properly, and the Board of Health doesn't find you have a problem and order you to hook up. But we expect we will provide a financial incentive to hook up early, it's cheaper and better for everybody, the streets open, the flange is there, we'll let a contract for unit cost for hookup, it would probably be cheaper, but if you choose not to, so be it. It is difficult to project how many people will hook up how quickly, we've talked to our consultant about that, he says, well, it varies widely, it ranges between 10% and 60% in the first year, our best estimate is 30%. Now, if things go as planned, we will have expansion capability later, but, you know, things don't always go as you plan, so we have to figure on what we have in hand. We're looking at a system that DEP will approve for a total capacity of 250,000 gallons. When you do that, DEP says, well, when you get to 80% of that capacity, we'll start breathing down your neck, either to increase the capacity or decrease the water usage. And that would be 200,000. We have the advantage of a very efficient water district, who's able to give us a total of all the meter readouts, and we are currently averaging in the district that we're proposing an average water consumption of 133,000 gallons per day, which means we have roughly about that amount of sewage. So we can go to 200,000 gallons, we think we will all comfortably fit within that in the district. If however, something goes widely amiss, and some years from now, somebody who chose not to hook up in the early years, and has paid the abatement, or is in the process of paying, and comes to hook up and there isn't capacity, I think the legal answer is that's too bad, the moral answer is we'd probably make some financial adjustment. We don't expect that to happen, but that's a worst-case scenario. We would hope more people would hook up sooner than later, in any event, but we plan the plant to be phased in, and it will handle the, the spool-up curve as we go. Now, the schools representative will speak to it specifically, but I can't pass, I can't sit down myself without pointing out the school situation. If you vote this down, we fold up our books and say, okay, Acton has once and for all decided there's not going to be public sewers in town, there is going to be a public treatment plant, and it's going to be at the schools. And it will probably end up infiltrating under the football field, and our best guess is the capital costs about $2 million, and that the operating expenses will be about three times what their share of the operating expense would be in this system. And frankly, as a selectman, the first thing I would do would turn around and plead with them to at least please handle the Redstone condominiums, which are right up against their boundary and are one of our problem places. So, there is going to be some public sewer treatment, in any event, courtesy of the DEP. Now, we're going to put a lot of pipe in the ground, does that equal a great growth in the municipal empire? You know, Don talked about 194 FTE the other day, are we talking about a new town department with lots of people? And the answer is no. We have a very effective organization in town that does great maintenance on pipes and streets called the Acton Water District. And once we get this built, which of course will be done under contract, it is contemplated that the Acton Water District will take over the operation and maintenance of the pipes in the ground, both the collectors and the interceptors. Jim Demming, who's our current Acton Water District Manager, most fortuitously has done this in another town, indicates he'd need one additional piece of equipment, and my personal perspective, thought he sounded eager to do it. Well, you know, everybody does their own thing. That leaves us with the plant. Okay, again, no town empire. We intend to contract out the operation of the plant to a private contract. This is sort of privatization without ever having done it publicly. And that's how we expect the system to run. I hope that after an informed discussion tonight, there is a vote that results in no further discussion of whether we will sewer, and that the next time we're talking about it, we're talking about expanding an existing system. Please vote for this article. Thank you.
Before it's going to be open to the town meeting members, there are going to be five boards that will make short statements, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission in that order. And first, Sidney Johnstone, Johnson from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends passage of this article. Some of the points that we have considered in coming to that conclusion is that the measured water flow in the proposed district and the capacity of the plant are matched so that the water flow is about 50% of the capacity of the plant, which means that there's room for people to increase their usage after the plant is built without overflowing it, so that seems like a reasonable design point. A second point that we have is that the computed cost per homeowner seems reasonable, because we've approached the costs from several different angles, attempting to verify that the numbers are good sensible numbers, and we conclude that they are. And a third point that we would like to make, that Mr. Hunter made a few minutes ago, but we'd like to repeat it, is that there is the potential that people would double their flow after they get connected to the sewer, so that if someone is lagging in connecting and wants to connect five years later, you may find that the plant capacity has been used up. All in all, we recommend in favor of passage of this article.
I think we'll hear now from Lee Stuntz and Pam Harding Barrett from the School Committee. Is that correct?
I think I can do this without any slides, so, because I think these are numbers that people can handle without looking at them. Basically, the septic system at the regional schools is not adequate. We have had a study done, there is, the water that is leaving the regional school complex is just about drinkable. So we are not actively polluting at the moment, but it does, the Department, the DOE doesn't like it, and I don't blame them. So, about four years ago, we entered into a negotiation with the DOE. Basically, the bottom line is, soon, sooner rather than later, we are going to have to treat the effluent coming out of the regional schools. That means a packaged treatment plant would cost us $2 million. The cost to sewer, the central campus in the sewer district, is $1.5 million. In addition, the operating costs for a packaged treatment plant onsite would be approximately $70,000 a year. The estimated cost using the sewers would be approximately $30,000, or some number like that. So I didn't think I needed slides to explain that to you. We heartily support the searing option over the packaged treatment plant, because we feel it's a better deal for the town.
Is, is that the comment from the School Committee, or will there be more? That's it? Okay, then we will move to the Planning Board, John Pavin. Do you have slides, John? Okay, fine, great. My eyes, thank you.